We could reject.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Well, we got Dana stepping in.
Yes.
Definitely a lot better.
Okay. So Kenny, we appreciate your great service on the Community Services Board. If you would like to go forward, ladies.
Great. Thank you. Several years ago, when, right when I became the Chair of the Board, it was, had it just been decided that we would transition the organization from an operational board to a policy administration board, there were a lot of questions and how is that going to work? And as we moved through it, we were always wondering, would it work? And then, you know, after it worked, after we transitioned into the city, you just sort of sit back and wait for that hiccup, right? And it's been over a year and there have been no major hiccups. Marcus Jones and his team did a tremendous job transitioning this organization and picked a great executive director in Sarah Fuller. And I'm communicating on behalf of not only my own sentiments, but the entire Board of Directors. We've got a great city manager and a great executive director at the Community Services Board and a great staff. Right before this meeting, elections were held for next year's officers. So I'd like to introduce those officers to you. Back in the corner is Garrett Cooper. And Garrett is currently our Vice Chair and he's going to serve as our Vice Chair again next year. And then elected to the Chair of the Board is Dana Redding. And so, yeah, I asked her if she was ready. She said no, but she was willing. They'll take office effective January 1st. And I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Sarah Fuller now, who has a presentation. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sarah, why don't you introduce the rest of the board while you're here.
Great. So the Norfolk Community Service Board board members are almost fully, I think, ideal. There are only missing one. So if you guys could stand and actually introduce yourselves, that would be fantastic.
Pat Thrasher.
Chris Nicholas.
Henry Conde.
Dana Redding.
Kathy Weaver.
Barbara Clear.
Erica Bola.
Gary Cooper.
Jeanette Franklin.
Michael Hires.
Karen Fox.
Thank you. And I also want to extend.
Well, thank y'all for being here today.
I also want to extend my appreciation to Dr. Reverend Brian for helping guide the way. And if you don't mind, I'd like to, for the staff, this is a portion of our leadership team that's here today, really. Norfolk Community Services Board already came with an amazing group of staff members. And we even have a couple of new people. So if you wouldn't mind, very quickly, if you could start with Dr. Forte in the back, and what you do, if you don't mind.
Dr. Forte, Director of Medical Director.
Jackie Shady, Director of Crisis and Recovery.
Stacy O'Toole, Child and Adolescent Services.
See you in the hearing too, with Infant Toddler Connection and Child and Adolescent.
Jackie Griffin. Jackie Griffin is my assistant. She doesn't like to introduce herself, but I can't live without her. Okay. Ren, please.
Ren Reikart, DHR Administrator.
Dawn Reikart, Enterprise Controller.
Offboard Director of Administration.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So we're back to the presentation. And I apologize for being sick again. I think I planned this, and Marcus asked me if I planned this intentionally for this meeting every year. So we're going to do a quick review of fiscal year 2014. So the focus of the Board, the Board of Directors itself, was to updating their focus and the structure of the Board of Directors, what's really kind of targeting and realigning under Kenny's direction, really where they wanted to go, shifting from an operational model to a policy administrative function, developing relationships with other behavioral health and developmental disabilities advocacy groups, really working with other like-minded organizations to ensure we're not replicating services that are happening and co-supporting other initiatives and filling gaps, and increasing attention to legislative work and state policy. Neil Walsh is actually on our Board. He's the Chair, he's the Chair of the Committee for Legislative Activities. He is actually in Richmond today. He has been amazing over the last year to make sure we were staying completely informed and at the table with a lot of things related to Medicaid reform. So that's been very much appreciated. The focus of our, the CSB, the Operations, the Department, that you won't spend more of your time thinking about, our focus for this year's been on facility maintenance and improving our environment. Actually, we got approval for three big moves, moving out of two buildings that are really not a good place for us to be operating out of. We moved out of the first one, finished moving out of it Friday. It makes Sandy very happy. Infant Toddler Connection moved to another rented space, but it actually saves us enormous amount of money.
Where are we located?
From Roland Park, which is on the underpass of Tidewater Drive, the old shopping center, to Lowry Road. It's the Spine and Rehab Center, something.
Right next to the Walgreens.
Right next to the Walgreens. Or right, right next to the Walgreens. And conveniently located next to public transportation. But it's a really nice building.
So the first building that you moved out of Roland Park.
Yes, sir.
That was, you know, renovated especially for CSB, I believe. So what made that inadequate, adequate?
Sure. The building, we were only using about a fourth of the space in that building, and we did not have a use for the rest of the building anymore. The building had been reconfigured some time ago, but updated, not completely updated. And so it continued to age. The building needs a lot of work and it has much more space than we need at this time. And so for the square footage that we needed, it made more sense to move to a building where the owner was taking complete control of the facility. We have a full service lease for a much lower cost.
Did we own the previous building?
No, we did not. No, we're renting that building as well. And we did have ongoing discussions with that current landlord, but it didn't work out. It worked out best for us to move. And so we're saving money every month and providing security for that program, knowing that they're not going to have any unexpected facility maintenance costs, which is very important for budgeting. And then we'll have a couple more moves that we'll talk about over the next few months, which are going to make some similar changes. Services, we are still working to realign our service provision. That is an ongoing process and we hope to have another big chunk of realignment done over this year. And revenues, back to services, one of the things we're focusing on right now is how can we make sure that we have our services aligned so that we're paying attention to the front line? You know, we're the first responders for mental health. We want to make sure that we're pushing our services in that direction, that we're also not replicating things that are done in the private sector. We don't need to do the things that replicate in the private sector. And then, taking care of folks that need a wraparound service that's not provided in other places. CSBs are uniquely positioned to provide comprehensive wraparound services to people that are in the most need and making sure we're focusing on that. For revenues, working on billing effectiveness and new billing products, this has been very challenging this year. We are getting more and more consumers coming in with no insurance and so our threshold of insured versus uninsured continues to put a burden on us as far as our ability to have revenue generating clients coming in. So it certainly is a challenge. We're making sure that we try to balance that as best we can. We have been modernizing our methods of billing, working with our electronic health record system and with our Medicaid and Medicare partners to make sure we move forward effectively. I saved a slide from last year just to review what the functions the Community Services Board does. I'm going to actually slip past this in case you haven't, unless you have any questions. This is, just gives you a brief overview and a little bit of an update of the threshold of services. You've got annually, adults, any adult at any given time in the year, 26% of them could experience a mental, a mental health disorder, a mental health crisis. This is important to pay attention to. You have lifetime prevalence and then other, you have children at 13% and incarcerated adults. We were really looking at rate entry, so we tried to keep a track on that. And just, suicide is actually the tenth top, I mean, sorry, the fourth leading cause of death nationally for persons ages 18 to 65. So suicide's not rare. Actually, it's a pretty significant issue across the country. And substance abuse as well. 9% of adults at any given time are in need of addiction treatment. Interestingly enough, only 1% actually will receive treatment during that episode. There's also been a 9.3% increase in drug-related deaths in the Tidewater area from 2009 to 2010. And we don't have more current data than this. This is actually given to us by the CDC. I know there've been some news reports lately, but we don't, that data's not obtainable for us.
How many people would that be?
Pardon me?
Could you give us a percentage like that?
Oh man, you're asking me math questions. Yes, sir.
I mean, would that be three people? Two people, six, 10? Do you know?
Okay. So we have 8.6 drug-related deaths per 1,000 or in Norfolk in 2010.
Okay. All right. I can do the math.
I'm sorry.
How do you get 0.6 though? Is that interesting?
No, I can't do math from the floor. Okay. So intellectual disabilities impacts 1.3% of the population in general. This year, you'll actually see some shift in our cost going to developmental disabilities. We had, we had a 75% increase in the service rate by ID case managers required by us. So we did have to add new ID case managers. We also opened the two group homes, because we talked about that for many, many years, but we finally opened those two group homes. And so, so we actually have increased our services significantly. Employment supports are about the same. It comes to us, we, through the department, and we contract that out. Basic services we provide, obviously access to care, emergency interventions, accessible hospitals, discharge planning, intake assessment, outreach, and then our other community support services. It's all the stuff that helps people stay well when they're out of the hospital. Numbers served, we serve 6,355 persons in Norfolk, what, last year? At least they were in Norfolk when they received the services. As you can see, just over half of them received emergency outreach or prevention services. 517 is developmental, that's mostly our intellectual disabilities. 1,200 substance abuse and 2631 in mental health services. Emergency services, pretty hot topic right now, so we thought we'd go ahead and give you a slide just for that. We had 2,315 face-to-face emergency evaluations by our emergency services team last year. It's a lot of evaluations. Of them, of the ones who ended up going inpatient or ended up actually going under a TDO, we had a TDO to a hospital, 706 of them, I'm sorry, and then 299 of them ended up in a crisis stabilization unit. I'll say that again, that was badly said. Of the 2,315, 706 of them were TDO'd to a hospital and 299 of them went to a crisis stabilization unit. We have our own crisis stabilization in Norfolk.
How many of those that should have been hospitalized were not? Because of lack of space? Kenny?
There were, over the last 12 months, there were seven persons who, at the time that we were not, once the time expired, we had not actually found, we had not actually secured a bed and did not end up securing a bed. Many times we'll find the bed, many hours later, we find other ways to help keep them safe and calm. We might provide a different intervention after that time expires. But we had only seven that we really would have preferred that they go inpatient and they did not. One of them actually was. And they did not because of lack of space? We ultimately could not find a bed or any other placement. We couldn't find another solution to work. We do not have any knowledge of any negative impact as a result of that. For four, for four of them, we found a bed. It was much later. We ended up intervening with them later down the line and then get them in a hospital again. One of them actually came into outpatient services and did just fine with that. One of them, the family chose to take them to other services. We're not exactly sure what happened with that one. They chose not to engage with this any further. And then one was incarcerated at some point after that.
Was these, was this before the Creedede event?
Yes. This was, this is November of this, November, it was up to Thanksgiving. So it's from Thanksgiving of last year to Thanksgiving of this year.
So what have you done?
Did the day analysis over Thanksgiving.
What have you done since the Creedede event to make yourself more effective when it comes to lack of beds and things of that nature?
Sure. Well, one of the things we were able to do immediately was to make sure that our staff knew that if we had any event where we were going to look at a no disposition, to make sure the staff were aware, that both Jackie and myself were available and we actually, so we actually could actively work the case, because we wanted to make sure we could actively work the case. They have, there are, we do have the ability to do that and to make sure that they reach out. I mean, if we're going to come to the point where there's just no resource at the end of the line, then Jackie and I want to talk about it and we want to know and we want to make sure we're having conversations with our community partners to see what it is that we can do. The state is going to update its protocols and I don't want to thwart the protocols the state is.
I think it just did.
Pardon me?
Today. It just did today. You see what McDonald proposed?
He did, but it's not in policy yet. The policy won't get released until January. Jackie and I are going to a meeting next week on this. But for the interim, we made sure the staff knew that they want to push it up the line if there's going to be any intervention. We have not had one in quite some time. So the ones that.
What is pushing up the line? What do you mean?
Make sure that they know that we're available 24/7 if, if, if they're going to get to the point where there's a crisis and someone's going to have to be released, that Jackie and I both have our cell phones on 24/7 or have someone covering for us.
But since this event, have you decided that you cannot afford to release anybody? And when I, I don't mean monetarily afford.
Right.
I'm talking about in terms of safety and things of that nature. This was a horrific event and it was an awful black eye on that particular Community Services Board. So what I want to know is what have we learned here to make sure that that never happens to us?
Sure. What we can do is we can actually make sure our staff know that they can reach out to us. I don't want to do a postmortem on what we don't know ultimately as to what happened in Bath County. The, and then we have to just make sure that we're, that we're communicating. We do have legal limits as to what we can do and we need to make sure that when we reach that legal limit, if someone is unwilling to stay and participate in an alternative service provision, we're going to have to have a discussion about what we do then. But there's, I'm not sure how much further to go with that at this point.
Just to let you know, I mean, from what I just see just got posted, and I, I'm not seeing it in your documents, is the Governor's proposal include extending the maximum duration of such orders, meaning emergency custody orders. Maximum duration of such orders from six to eight hours.
Correct.
It's increased funding, so temporary detention orders for longer care last 72 hours instead of the current 48 hours. And money for expanding crisis intervention services to assist in holding people while placement is sought. Eastern State is getting $7.2 million, an extra $7.2 million to maintain current capacity and expand its bed availability.
So that is the Governor's proposed budget?
Yes. This is, right, this just got reported by the Virginian Pilot.
Yes. That is the Governor's proposed budget. And what you do have is you have Executive Order 68, what he's actually can do with Executive Order. He and, and the incoming Governor McCullough have actually worked cooperatively on what they believe the mental health package should be. We have to wait for the General Assembly to change the code before we could keep anybody longer than what's is now, or for the TDO to change. And any new money actually has to get passed by the General Assembly. There's, the Governor does not have discretion for these dollars. He can make the recommendation, the budget, but it does have to be passed by the General Assembly. My understanding though, is that both the outgoing and incoming Governor are in agreement with the direction on how the Board, so we shouldn't have any delay and the exchange of the administration. But we are at the table, we will be at the table, and we'll make sure that we're accessing any resource that becomes available. And we're already talking to our partners at Eastern State for the new beds. We already have a plan. So we were working on some of this before this situation happened. It just gives an opportunity to get it moving through a little bit more quickly.
It's like $38 million.
Yeah. He's put $38, he suggested or proposed $38 million. But, you know, Marcus, Sarah, on, on top of what the state does, I mean, they're, the city allocates a certain amount of funds for the Community Service Board, over and above what they get from the federal number, and we have for years supplemented the funding. And you know what? I guess every year about this time, I ask the question, where do we stand on a per capita basis as compared to our neighbors? How much money they're putting into mental health and substance abuse issues? But in light of the point that Paul is making, and certainly we all heard about with Senator Deeds, that Marcus, it might, might do well to review here at the end of the year what we're, you know, where our funding is. We don't want something like that to happen here. And to the extent that we may need additional funding now, between now and what the General Assembly may do, the funds are made available. Okay? I mean, from our own pockets if we have to. Right? Okay. And Sabrina, maybe you could give us that number again? What, you know, I don't know what Chesapeake or Portsmouth or New Berners or Hampton, I wouldn't go all the way to Northern Virginia, but among the seven cities here, give us an idea of what people are spending on a per capita basis on supplementing their Community Services Board and where the city of Norfolk ranks in there. Give us some idea.
Is our, is our population though comparable to those of the other cities?
Well, what we did last year is we ran the seven cities and then we also ran Richmond, because Richmond has a much more comparable population base for us. And then we ran the seven cities in Richmond when we did the, when we did the analysis. So we can certainly work with Sabrina to run that for you again.
Something like Richmond.
Sure. I would expect Richmond to be in any, in any sort of, you know, comparison there. But, and the point is that we may have to do more than what the other folks are, because some of our people feel more stressed.
And Dr. Thrasher just reminded me that Centerra is actually opening up in other cities.
They're opening up another adult psychiatric unit at Virginia Beach General Hospital, which will be the first expansion of psychiatric beds in Tidewater in well over a decade.
Let me ask a question. Earlier, you made the statement that suicide is not rare. And, although to me, that just didn't, that's sort of like an oh well type thing.
Oh, I certainly didn't mean it that way.
Well, it's, you know, it sounded that way. What are we doing? Do you have any data? Have you prevented any suicides? What, you know, what could you show that we do have a keen interest in trying to prevent suicide and recognizing persons who have that as opposed to just, you know, suicide is not rare?
Sure. Okay. So to rephrase, thank you, to rephrase that, suicide is a huge public health issue. It's the fourth leading cause of death. And so, that's a better way to state it. And for those of you that know me, I've actually been a pretty strong suicide prevention advocate for majority of my career. And we, we do actually know of the persons that come in and present to us, the ones that are presenting with suicidal ideation. And, and of those persons, how many people we were able to put in either inpatient psych to our own crisis stabilization unit or to serve through emergency services or outpatient crisis response. We can actually get you that information. I have a massive database I was working with over Thanksgiving, responding to a couple of questions, and I actually can get that from that database as well. Probably next week sometime, just over the weekend to pull that data. But we actually do have that, we do have that information on a percentage basis, the numbers of persons that come in.
Thank you.
So I'm going to keep moving forward because I have their others. We need to get to other stuff. But thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up. The, we also partner very strongly already with the police. 24% of the calls for our face-to-face calls are initiated by Norfolk Police. 50% of the persons we see have no insurance at all. And 43 of the evaluations that we do result in crisis stabilization or TDO. This is our budget right now. It's very similar to the budget that you saw last year as far as the waste proportion. The shift in, the difference at this point for this year was the increase into mental health services. City requested area of works, work, veterans. We have worked very hard on a relationship with the Wounded Warrior Program, that it continues to be an evolving process. We work together with Norfolk Department Courts to initiate the Veterans Court. And we are the executive directors for the CSBs in Region Five. That's us, are working with the VA Medical Center. We're really concerned about veterans being able to access inpatient care. And focusing on suicide prevention, we actually have our assist program, which Stacy's team works on, and training school staff, and we do other community partners as well. And in post-traumatic stress disorder, we enhance the curriculum for first responders and, and we actually have a full-time post-traumatic special, stress disorder specialist at Community Services Board that provides group and outpatient counseling as well as training to our staff and the community and other CSBs. And we've increased our staff training.
A question about the first responders, which is very important. I'm glad you're on top of that. I think five or six cities had their police departments who were trained as first responders. There was a Vietnam veteran in Portsmouth who was killed by the Portsmouth Police Department who was suffering from post-traumatic stress. But the officers who responded were not trained and they did not stand down until the other officers got there. How do we, well, I guess, how do we recognize that or, you know? And, you know, an example that we have here, that's a horrible example, was a fellow who was suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder and he, it was over by the Marine Base off of Terminal Boulevard. When he was transported, he was not transported in an ambulance, he was transported in a police car, I believe, with the ambulance following, and he died. So, I mean, both of those are two horrible events that could have been prevented if this fellow had been, our guy had been transported in the ambulance as opposed to the police car and ambulance following. You know, so.
Sure.
And I don't know whether you were with Community Services Board then or whether that falls on Community Services Board's plate. It does not, because it happened on base.
Sure.
But our police department responded. Our police department got into an event with the fellow and our police department decided to transport him in a police car versus an ambulance.
Sure. So the, I want to respond to your first question. The second question is, I don't know. I mean, if someone is medically compromised, they absolutely should go in ambulance and in our police department, so I'm always paying attention to that.
They didn't that time.
As best as they possibly can. Mike, do you want to respond to that one?
Yeah. During that particular incident, Mr. is correct, we did initially transport in a police car, but the ambulance was right behind us because we knew that the person was in crisis. It was a matter of moments between we realized something was going on and we were able to render medical care to the person. I don't have the autopsy results in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly what the cause of death was, but as I recall, Dave, if you recall, there was some.
Yes.
I think there was some drug use involved with that. I'm not blaming anybody, but I do think that we had medical care there at the time.
The drug use, that's, that's kind of vague. He could have smoked marijuana if that was the case, you know, two days before and it would have showed traces of it and not necessarily. That happened on base and I don't know the relationship between the Norfolk Police Department and the base officers. And it seemed to me that that was a time that we should have recognized for somebody, not necessarily us, that there was a possibility of post-traumatic stress disorder because of all of the things that were divulged after this gentleman died.
Well, we are working very closely with Sarah's group to make sure that our officers get the appropriate training so that we can be effective in responding to those type of calls. We have, in fact, brought folks in to talk to our hostage negotiators along those lines so they can become more effective when we're dealing with vets, perhaps a barricade situation. It's still a work in progress and we're still moving towards the end that we can make sure that we provide best service in reference to that. And a lot of that is working with CSB.
I don't know if this is the time, this is something I bring up every time we talk. I've talked to Chief Goldsmith about the CIT training. And, and I know, I think that's a lot of what you're talking about right now with this intensified therapy. But the last time I spoke with you, which was, I believe, the summer, you mentioned that the issue was less the funding for the training and more the space to put the clients. Is, is that still an issue for this or are we now solving?
I think what we're trying to work towards with CSB is something that's sustainable that we can continue to do. You know, a piece of us is training, a piece of us is bed space, a piece of us is working with Sarah's group as far as evaluators go. All three of those, it's a system. All three of those have to work together for us to be effective. And what the police department and CSB is both trying to do is get that system put in place so that we can have an effective. the end that we can make sure that we provide best service. In reference to that, a lot of that is working with CSP.
I just, I don't know if this is the time, this is something I bring up every time we talk. And I've talked to Chief Goldsmith about the CIT training. And I know, I think that's a lot of what you're talking about right now, with this intensified therapy. But the last time I spoke with you, which was, I believe, the summer, you mentioned that the issue was less the funding for the training and more the space to put the clients. Is that still an issue for this, or are we now solving something?
I think what we're trying to work towards with CSP is something that's sustainable, that we can continue to do. You know, a piece of us is training, a piece of us bed space, a piece of us working with Sarah's group, as far as evaluators go. All three of those, it's a system, all three of those have to work together for us to be effective. And what the police department and CSP is both trying to do is get that system put in place, so that we can have an effective program. We've already run a portion of our police officers through that, it's 40 hours of training. So logistically, it is something that we have to get a certain percentage of our officers through. It takes time, it takes resources, but we're convinced that we're able to get it done, and get it done effectively. So I think we're working all three of those fronts, to try to make sure that we get it accomplished.
So we've been able to make a couple of things happen, even with our current budget. And so we have been, we told you we would keep moving forward on it. So the police department has actually sent some of their staff. We have some of our leadership team have been going to CIT management trainings, to make sure that they know how it is that we do this, we participate in the statewide system of care for that. The other thing that we've done is we actually have secured, we have a couple of legal pieces to get through, but we actually have secured our ability to provide a waiting room area that could be easily then switched over to the kind of the drop-in, drop-off area. And we're going to be able to get that done. In our current budget, it's part of our cost savings with what with moving out of Roland Park is going to do. We're going to co-locate that with our crisis stabilization center. We're going to move emergency services from Virginia Beach Boulevard out to our Tidewater Drive building. And we're going to, because the drop-off center and assessment center and the CIT partnership is emergency services. That will be co-located with CSU. That way, if we get to, once we get to the point where we can afford the 24/7 co-response system, and we have all the training in place, then we already have the facility done, we already have the relationships done, we've already merged the two CSP departments that need to be merged to make it happen. We've already improved access to our crisis stabilization unit through a new front door for that, instead of going through the emergency room first. And so we really have worked through with, with Marcus' help, we've really been able to work through, being able to take as many steps as we possibly can, bite by bite, everything we can afford, affording it as we can, as we go. So we're not, we don't want to set ourselves up for something in the future that is unsustainable. So we really are making progress. And so we're looking forward to, hopefully, some opportunities in this General Assembly, to be able to give us a little bit of a kick, and being able to get that, get even more of it done. Finished going through the slides? Is that okay?
Just have one thing to say.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank Sarah. For Marcus, that was a smart hire. And I, without giving too many details, I had firsthand experience of working, or seeing Sarah in action off the clock. We were both waiting for, we were both waiting for dinner one night, we're at a place, and a client of CSP was there. And her personal knowledge of that client, it was just amazing to see what she knew, how she interacted with him. And what I left with is that you have somebody who really cares about what she's doing. And I don't think you could ask for anything more with that. So you have somebody who really believes in this work, and I think is going to continue working hard and making changes in this. Just from a perspective, from seeing how she interacted with one person way outside of the area. So thank you, Sarah, for you.
It's my volunteer today. Forecast for 15, I do believe this is our last slide. We have new programs and contracts with Medicaid and Medicare with some new requirements. You're actually going to have an ordinance next week, which actually will help us take the second step in our Medicaid and Medicare realignment program. There'll be increased expectations on urgency and frequency of care, that will lead to better, at least a better outcome. So they're really expecting us to report outcomes. We will have many new regulations on how we access inpatient care and emergency services. We're happy and ready, step to the plate. Jackie and I are going to be in Richmond at the very starting gate for that. What we don't know is when will we expand Medicaid, because we have faith we will, we just need to know when, because that makes a huge difference in when we can start seeing some increased dollars coming in. And we don't know what the state budget's going to look like. So that is all I have for you. Do you have any additional questions for me, or I can step back, and y'all can discuss with the board?
The only thing I'd like to say is that, one thing that I think we all recognize that, that mental health is not, a person who is not in good mental health is nothing that's detectable visually. You can tell if a person is walking with a limp, they're visually impaired, if they're overweight, and things of that nature. But mental health and the lack of good mental health is something that we don't just see walking against, up against a person, or in contact with a person. You know, this is somewhere around the anniversary of Sandy Hook. And so I think it's very incumbent that all CSPs encourage families to engage with anybody who can help them with mental health issues. If the reports that were given in regards to the events of Sandy Hook were correct, and I'm only going by the reports, this young fellow's mother did not seek any help for him. And even if she did, it was, you know, it was too late. So I think it's the shootings that we see in movies, and this has nothing to do with gun control, but the shootings we see in movies and all of the things, and when I say movies, I'm talking about movie theaters, like the one we had in Colorado, I believe. But, you know, somehow, mental health has to be, I guess it's a twofold thing. A family has to come and seek your help. And then when they do seek your help, you have to be able to, you know, respond in a manner that's, you know, that's safe and acceptable for them. So it's a very, very, very difficult issue on your part, because I say, it's nothing that can be recognized just by looking at a person. But it's something that all of us know is extremely important, because we've had so many catastrophic events in this country within the last year, year and a half, that's associated strictly with a lack of mental stability on the part of the perpetrator.
I want to respond very quickly to let you, hopefully, that this will make you feel comfortable, or at least have a little help. We're doing two things right now, to make sure we're really pushing out awareness, because we can train people to recognize the signs of mental health disorders. They might, it may not be what it is, but at least it gets people asking the right questions. The assist training actually is exactly identified and targeted to do that. The new mental health first aid training will also do that as well. And then we actually have Kathy Weaver is here today. She is actually on our board, and she's also with Norfolk National Alliance for persons with mental health disorders of Virginia. I don't know how to say that correctly. They actually run family-to-family trainings and peer-to-peer trainings, and they reach out to families. So when families just want to say, hey, I think someone in my family's not well, they actually can get peer support from another family member before they even decide to engage the official mental health system, which is a beautiful thing. And we work hand-in-hand with them. They hold their meetings and their trainings in our buildings. And we make sure we set aside an hour a month, just to talk about mutual ways that we can assist our community. So, Nami, I'm sure would be more than happy to find new ways to get the message out to more families that want that support. We truly believe that they are the first line of defense in preventing a mental health crisis episode for persons who haven't been identified before.
Okay, well, thank you for a great presentation. Kenny, thank you for stepping in at a very tough time and providing such, you know, great leadership. Talk to this board, to all of us. And I know working with Marcus is not easy, but, you know, it was okay. But thank you. I want to thank the Community Services Board. We know this is, and all of you take this job very seriously, and your role in trying to provide good mental health, community mental health, and dealing with substance abuse issues. It's maybe the toughest thing we have in the city, and we know how responsive you take that job. So we want to thank you for being a part of it. Sarah, thank you as well. Okay, you did great tonight. Very great, great responses out here. And Marcus, I think we really need, you know, of all the things that we do, at the end of the day, the people who need it the most always seem, you know, to get people with mental health issues, substance abuses, people who can't stand up for themselves, even at the state level. But even here, we have to be very mindful of the fact that we fund to our part, to make sure that the funding is adequate for these, for the really, for these folks who desperately need our help. Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. Thanks, Kenny. Thank you all for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus, don't go anywhere, because you're going to push your six o'clock, so we need to. All right, Marcus, you want to go through the agenda?
Mayor, and members of council, in terms of the piece of paper, there are a number of items, but I can assure you that after the closed session, the five items are two or three slides each. So they're not very long presentations to begin with. So what we wanted to do is give you an update on red light cameras. I believe we started this discussion maybe back in my first retreat back in September 2011. So we'll give you a real-time update. I think at some point, you may hear somebody to my right screaming, play ball, because we're going to give you an update on the Tides lease. That joke didn't go over too well. But then, we also. And we also have, Dr. Wibbly, I think, had asked on a couple occasions for us some updates with our after-school programs. So we have Darryl Crittenden, who will provide an update. We committed two weeks ago to give you an update on the PPEA as well, and an update on the vacant schools RFP that went out. And lastly, I believe Councilman Smigle asked last time for us to bring back the MOU that was discussed in terms of the Elizabeth River Crossing. So with that said, Mayor, we have, after council, interests and concerns, we have two items for a closed session.
All right, Andy.
Just, I had asked the office to pass out, yesterday's Wall Street Journal had an article about pre-K education as a long-term winner. Something that Paul and I had learned and continue to learn more about in the Poverty Commission that the mayor has set up. But it's also, goes hand in glove with what we received from the school board when they came to spoke to us about taking children off of the waiting list. And this really does discuss specifics as to the benefits of having pre-K, universal pre-K, what the Obama administration is doing for universal pre-K. So I just had asked that the article we passed around, so everybody could have it, your own edification, that's all. And I've talked to Sabrina on some of the other things offline. Okay, thank you. Mr. Riddick?
Yeah, okay. Sort of in-depth, I'm going to read it in depth. I've been, for several months, complaining about the conditions of our streets and sidewalks, curbs and gutters in some of our most fragile neighborhoods. And Huntersville has really been the focal point. As I had mentioned earlier, I was really taken aback that the funds for these projects, I suppose, are coming from community block development grant funds. I'm just wondering why the less fortunate communities, for the first time I know of, have to wait for CBDG funds. I'm noticing that the public works dollar is now, or again, racially and class identifiable. Norfolk is going back to the 60s when it comes back to public works improvements. It's unacceptable. Even street markings are deplorable. And I'm just wondering, you know, where the funds that should be, or have been allocated for these poor communities? And I'm wondering if the funds have been diverted. Another concern is how we treat our clients at that, down at the old Ames Building, Workforce Development Center, I think is what we call it. Quite often, persons who are coming in for entitlements and services are not treated as respectful as they should be. And one of the things I think would be beneficial is we stop calling names over loudspeakers and start using numbers. You know, it's just, sometimes it's just too, I guess you'd say, focusing on individuals. And it's just not a lot of privacy. Somebody could be sitting over here, and you call John Smith's name, and they're just wondering. So I think we need to go to numbers. And I think that the individuals that we have working there need to be a little bit more sensitive when it comes to working with individuals there. I've had two or three different complaints, one very recently that I'll share with you later on. And also, I've been talking about the resurfacing of a couple of streets over in Fairmont Park. The streets that I'm asking about is Flanders Street, and I think is Lionel Martin's. Now, the excuse I get is that these streets, these portions of that community are going to have utility work done. And so that means that, you know, we don't want to do the work, because we've got utility work coming. But with the timetables that we've had here recently, there's no telling when that will happen. Now, we have a business over there, People's Cleaners, has been there for a long time. And that business is, you know, the streets, plan the street, going up to that particular business is awful. So much so that I've heard, you know, from Father Green, that this man might be thinking about closing that business. We have to give more curb appeal to our businesses. You know, we want to, we want to be competitive, as far as our businesses are concerned. But when it comes to, somebody could say, well, heck, I'll go to this guy on 21st Street, as opposed to going over there. And so somehow, we have to do something to protect this particular business. And I've had Robert Sobel from the Housing Authority mention the same thing to me some time ago. Father Green mentioned it to me. So we have to do something about it. We don't have a timetable for resurfacing. If you have to go in there and mill it, and just, just let it be that type of service. But we got to do something to protect this business, and all of our businesses who are, that need curb appeal. Somebody can go out and say, well, I'll go here and do business, because this guy, or this particular business doesn't look attractive. And it's no excuse for it. That's all I have.
Just really quickly, I think after our last meeting, when we heard from the Eagles at the park, no matter how you feel about this issue, it does seem apparent that what we're doing to get rid of the Eagles isn't working. And I would like to know what the plan is, what we have projected. I know the city managers working hard on this, and I'd like to have an update at some point to figure out what Plan B is.
Mr. Burford, you're running out of air.
Yeah.
I mean, this is like, we have one more meeting left, so.
Filibuster time.
Piggyback on what Mr. Riddick said. Over at Fairmont Park, we have been working diligently as relates to the streetscape program, and is at that end of the thoroughfare. And as I said to you the other day, it's somewhat concerning when you work long and hard with the community. And there are changes that are being made, that are not in keeping with the wishes, nor the design, nor the architectural integrity of what we had agreed upon. So I don't know who's making these changes, but we were in a meeting, and methodically, when we're in these meetings, we talk about planning from year to year to make sure that we can accomplish the things that we want to accomplish from a streetscape standpoint. That particular street you're talking about, Mr. Riddick, we've been over there, and we knew that it was a long process, in terms of about 18 phases of, you know, underground utilities, resurfacing, curbs and gutters, and what have you. And so we tried to deal with some of the social issues over in that area. We had boarded up properties, absentee landlords. You know, we took James Rogers and, you know, every department in the city over there to look at how we can combat that piece. Now, you know, I know that John has a schedule. But again, I do know businesses are impacted. I know most of that is the back of the business.
Right.
And if we can do something in the, you know, in the intro, you know. But I do think that businesses have a responsibility to, in terms of helping. Those guys wouldn't call, you know, for the longest time. And like I said, the units that we have there are absentee landlords. And so I'm hoping that, John, you can give, you know, us an update. I know it's coming, but I know that it was a long process in terms of getting where we are. But we are coming in terms of getting that done. Do you, what is that? Is that six months? A year? Where are we?
The, that section of Fairmont Park, as I recall, that it's about to go up to bid for the utility repairs and the street repairs. It'll probably take it. the utility repairs and the street repairs, it'll probably take a year or so for the work to be done. I'll give you more of an update.
Can we look at any type of mitigation that, that will allow business to be able to operate, or go out there, we could just take an assessment of what is hurting the business, you know, at least want to be able to be responsive from that standpoint? If there are things that we could do that help the business be more productive in terms of access, egress, ingress, and we'd love to do that.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Okay. Thank you. The last, you know, I know that we, we've been working on this public art, the second piece in Broad Creek, the circle, the turnaround. Yeah, just want an update, I know that this work will begin in January, I know the artist is pretty much done with the sculpture piece, but in terms of the work, the road work, because we have to, at the end of the day, we have to coordinate with the crocs, you know, once we start that work, and if we're going to work that, if I'm understanding how the work is going to be done from the inside out, then those big, those trucks, you know, that area is going to be, have to be closed off at some point to allow us to get the work done.
Yes, sir, we've got that in fraction.
Okay. Thank you, John.
I don't know why this is such a big peeve of mine, but street lights, they're out everywhere, and I know, I think we had a city staff member that was responsible for going around and doing it, even one of the brand-new lights that was put in at Ward's Corner isn't on, it's not running, there's another one right next to it that's not working, and I noticed this, I don't know why, but I noticed them, there's, you know, seven or eight on Pretty Lake Bridge that are out. We pay for that, right, regardless if they're on or off, and so, it's in our interest to get them on because we're paying for them. I don't know what Dominion needs to do, why they don't drive around at night, particularly on the main roads, and help us ID these, maybe they don't care, I mean, they're making money off it either way, but there's lights out all through the city, even when I went to the parade, all of our lights, the dome lights outside of the court were all off, they were just, there was no, not one light working over there. And, you know, it's a safety issue, particularly these dark intersections, you know, with people can't see when they're turning, I mean, I could just go through the whole city right now on major roads and tell you every light that's out, I just noticed it, I don't know why, and I don't know how we can be more proactive with it, I know we have a link on the website, but we're asking citizens to get out and get the pole number off of it, and how many citizens actually do that, and I can't get out of my car and get every single one of them. But I think there's got to be either other staff, when they're out at night, they have to start noticing it and recording it and sending it in, if we only have one person doing it, maybe it's a bigger issue, and I've seen lights that have been replaced within the four, past four years that have gone out again. I don't know if Dominion's using brand-new bulbs or what they're doing, it's just, this is a small issue, but big for me, it's just, I think that some, we need help with it somehow.
We'll work, we'll work.
I know you don't have a lot of staff, John, but.
Very kind of you, yes, sir.
Yeah.
We'll get more people on that issue.
Let's see, one thing, you finished, John?
Yeah.
Okay, one thing very quick, recently, and even now, they're having problems with rats over at Booker T. On my way down, I was listening to public radio, and there was a school district somewhere that were having some of the same issues, and so, I don't know how we can go, go back online and find that, because one of the things that they were doing is just in addition to, you know, the poison, things of that nature, was eliminating water sources for these rats, corking up, you know, all of the in suspicious holes or things of that nature, trash cans. One of the things we need to realize as far as Booker T. is concerned, about three restaurants in close proximity, we don't know how rodents move or how quickly they move, and so, some of those things would be beneficial, and since we have the Christmas holiday coming up, we can really concentrate on that. I mean, even at Booker T. football game this year, you know, they had a rat running through the, and even at the basketball game last week, a rat running through there, so, but if you could track that down on public radio, they had, this particular school district really had a way to eliminate it.
Speaking of Booker T., I believe Booker T. has been selected to march in the governor's inaugural parade, we may have to come up with some resources, I mean, they've, you know. Yeah, but they.
They have new uniforms.
They're bringing new uniforms. Yeah, so they're ready to go, they are excited about it.
They have a video on MPS where they surprised a woman by the school who won recycling perks, they hid behind a recycling truck.
That's good news. Okay, let's go into closed session.
Members of the council, similar to closing meetings, December 10, 2013, at 6:10, conference in the city, all the real estate matters, which is out of clause 3 of Section 8, Section 2.2-3711, to discuss real estate matters pertaining to the city and property in Washington Church Street, real estate matters pertaining to vacant school properties via vacant school process specifically at Meadowbrook, Valentine, Jeff Stewart, and Tucker Elementary. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Perdigeru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigal?
Aye.
Dr. Wibbly?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Marcus, what do you want to, we don't have time, does anybody have any questions about the Elizabeth River Crossing maintenance agreement? It is a maintenance agreement, it's.
The one it was, you better guess.
Right, but it's.
Well, we wanted, because there was confusion as to what that meant for the city, is there anybody can give us a minute of what that means? I read the document, it looks like it saves us money.
It's something we asked for, it just clarifies who's responsible for what maintenance. There's nothing that we are obligated to do, that we aren't already obligated to do, it just clarifies their responsibilities.
Right, and it came up to the council before the Supreme Court had ruled, and so, I think that was a factor.
Right.
In not wanting to get ahead of the court case.
Marcus, where are you, anything else you want to say before we, before we break?
No, there's, anything else can be pushed to next week, we're fine.
Okay, are we going to have enough time at our meeting to discuss PPEA if?
Why don't we, we can start earlier next time, next week?
Four o'clock would be fine. Because it can't be some, one of those things that's rushed, damn.
PPEA means?
No, PPEA, the schools, because if we're going to get that information at the meeting, we're not going to have enough time to go through all of that stuff, four o'clock next Tuesday.
Okay. All right. I want you to know, this, this next Tuesday will be Anthony Burford's last city council.
Woo-hoo!
That'll save us 30 minutes. That'll save us 30 minutes right there.